All right, seven o'clock. I'm gonna get this show on the road here. So, welcome to the City Council Ordinance Committee meeting. It's September first, 7:00 PM. I did notice that we have some minutes that Owen submitted, and I'm happy to approve those if you've had a chance to take a look at those, Tom. Okay, so I'd be willing to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. And let me just see if I can get the date up.
Was that 6:30?
I think it was 6:30. So, okay, yep. So, let's see. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Owen Zaret.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
And I vote a "I" as well, so the motion passes. So, we just need to get those to Barbara.
I'll just, yeah, I've been sending them as a draft, and I'll just email her to tell her they were approved.
Perfect. And so, we have public speak time. If there's anybody here to speak about something that is not on the agenda, now's your time. Okay, it looks like I don't see anybody. So, I wanted to start off with Plastics tonight, and then we can go into highway business. So, we did get some feedback from the city solicitor that that are the last iteration that we did with withholding licenses didn't have precedent in our zoning, and he was concerned about that. And so, after I talked to Counselor Zaret, he said that he wasn't all that necessarily married to it. Is that kind of the correct assumption? That we could just take that out, and it wouldn't change things?
Yeah, I like the spirit of it. And I'm not a lawyer, so I can't say if globally it's unlawful, but I understand what he's saying is we haven't done this anywhere else in the city. So, it's maybe a future discussion, you know, when we look at, we review our ordinances. But I think that's the only real, otherwise, you know, the rest of the language was the same as we had previously approved. So, and he didn't seem to have an issue with anything else.
No, no, it seemed like he was okay with everything else going forward. And so, unless there's anything else that we wanted to dig into, I have it pulled up if we needed to look at it. But I was just planning on setting the public hearing. I know that we have a couple of busy meetings, so it probably wouldn't be until the October meeting, I think. Barbara sent me an email and told me the best meeting to set it for, and I'm blanking it right now. Does that seem agreeable to you guys? I know that we've had this on for a while, but, and it's just kind of keeps getting stuck with the attorney. But, yeah, I think we should be able to get this done hopefully before the second meeting in October. Seem fair? Yeah, Counselor Zaret.
Yeah, that seems reasonable. I mean, I don't want to jam up big council meetings and kind of bigger ordinances like this. I like to give them their room to breathe and not have a million other things on the agenda. So, I don't have, I'm in no rush, and, you know, so I don't have any issues.
Perfect. Okay. So, if you guys wouldn't mind, you know, I wasn't able to attend the last planning board meeting, and I know, and maybe, I don't see Jeff, but maybe that's just because I'm sharing my screen. It's like where the planning board came out with their restrictions, and kind of just what transpired, if you guys wouldn't mind catching me up.
So, I think, and I want to hear Counselor Peak's take too, because obviously this is through my lens. But I got the sense that the planning board was kind of mixed in terms of their approval or nonapproval of the language. I think they were kind of satisfied with the, where the conversation had gone regarding both, you know, shall we allow new buildings? As you can see in the packet, Chair of Aaron Derby, there's some kind of new language that for 10.10, 4.2 in terms of that co-location of cultivation with retail, so that we don't just have large buildings just dedicated to cultivation, the Highway Business District. And I think that they made a couple of recommendations, which you can see here in the packet, and then basically just moved it back to us. But I, my takeaway, again, this is just my lens, was that it was kind of mixed, and I don't think they necessarily approved or disapproved, but they just agreed to make these recommendations and send them back to us for discussion.
Counselor Peak, do you have a, and then I'll go to you, Jeff.
I don't want to put words in their mouth. But, yeah, the sense that I got was that the language that had been proposed by Planner Bag had, they were satisfied with that. I think there were some broader kind of questions about, I'm trying to figure out a way to put it succinctly, because it was sort of a long conversation that you, Counselor Derby certainly caught pieces of over the previous things that sort of continued, where there continued to be some concerns, but I think that the consensus on the board was that they could basically live with the language that was there, provided that, right, that there was that co-location and the other sort of provisions that were sort of inserted into that new language.
Right, and so that was a 25,000 square foot cap and a 35-foot height restriction? Okay. Jeff, do you want to chime in here?
Sure, thank you. Just, I think only just to build on it, I did have a question. It's just a process question. So, Counselors Eric, you know, said that the planning board kind of moved, you know, voted to send it back to us. And I just want to clarify that that "us" is the full city council. So, like, the process as outlined in the state ordinance and the chart that, you know, Barbara has, is that the planning board is the body that's charged with producing a report. And that was their vote was to kind of the brief report, the language goes to full city council for the public hearing. So, that's a, that may be an important, important point to discuss. But then, the idea that they were satisfied, they came up with language that felt like it accommodated much of the concerns or questions that they heard, and some were not, you know, were not incorporated. But then, that language constitutes what goes to full city council for the full, sort of the full and final deliberation, where within the scope of that, you know, within the scope of the big question that we've been grappling with for several months, the city council can decide to approve the language as is, can amend it, or could, you know, not approve it.
Right, so can you, I don't know if you can see the flow chart on the screen? That's the one you're talking about?
Yeah, that's the one that Barbara's given to me since the day I started.
That's the one I've used since the day I started. Counselor Peak.
Just in terms of my understanding of all of this, and it's very possible I'm wrong, as the newest member of this committee. For it to go to the council, it needs to first move out of committee. Like, we held that joint hearing with them, they took their vote. Now, we as a committee need to take our vote before it can move back to the, I mean, we could present it to the committee without our own report. Like, we are totally able to do that. But, but I believe that for the purpose of, like, the council, as far as the council knows, this matter is still in ordinance until we decide to move it back to the full council. And I think a lot of the time when we have these joint hearings, the, my understanding is that the committee and the planning board vote on the same night. That obviously didn't happen in part because our chair was not present at that meeting. So, you know, there was obviously some deliberation on our end that we wanted to do before taking a vote. Anyway, that's my understanding. Do I have anything wrong?
I think that that's, I think that's right. I think that's right.
I defer to Counselor Zaret. I mean, I guess I have a question about that.
Okay, sure, sure. Counselor Zaret.
I would agree with Counselor Peak that the ordinance is an agenda item within the ordinance committee. And that, I'm just looking at the flow chart. It just says city council must vote within 90 days after it holds public hearings. So, I think much like we've done with other legislation like this, we've received it back from the planning board. At times, we have voted simultaneously or in synchronicity with the planning board, but we also have taken it back and made changes to some of the recommendations there. And like we did with, if I remember, we did that with the cannabis equity. So, it doesn't, and I thought, that was my understanding too from that hearing. So, I mean, I just, there's, I'll be frank that there's items within here that I would want to discuss and deliberate on in this committee. So, I didn't think that we, that was the language that we had to take to the city council and that we have to set a public hearing for this just yet, but that's just me.
Jeff, do you want to respond or?
I'll try. I was, you know, this chart is, you know, I think there's a question here. So, we're not sure what to do with that yet. But if you bear with me for a minute, the chart is an illustration of, and I can't see the top of it. I know it's pulled from like this planning document, this federation of, we don't really, this document doesn't refer to anything. So, you know, what the statute, so it does the Massachusetts Federation of Planning Association. So, the process for changing zoning is laid out in Section 48, section, chapter 48, section five. So, you know, there is, I'm trying to look at it now and talk on Zoom, which is very difficult, sounds like a thing to do. But, you know, I don't know. I guess it's not clear to me what, if you were a town, so obviously we're not, but in a town, what happens is the planning board makes a report to town meeting. And town meeting is the body who decides on, you know, the language crafted by the planning board in the report. I just don't know enough about the past practice for.
I can speak to past practice.
Right, and then just the past practice in what, you know, what we want to make sure that we are following for today, too. But, okay.
So typically, what we've done in the past is we've had the joint public hearing. We will typically wait for the planning board's report before we take a vote. But what we have done in the past is we have, we bring, obviously, we bring the planning board's recommendation to the full council. But we've, we have absolutely deliberated between the council, the meeting, where we have the final public hearing in committee to talk about if we want to make any changes or if there's any amendments that we feel are appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only, I guess the only thing related to that is that you are not in a public hearing right now. So, you don't really have the authority to change, like, make a zoning ordinance and send it to council without starting a, that's my understanding of it. Is that you're, we're like, you're not in a public hearing, you're not advertised as a public hearing. So, I don't know. I'm willing to be flexible and watch this and like, figure out how this unfolds. But the way that this reads is that the planning board, so there, if you can, Counselor Zaret, if you can scroll up just that, I can't see that top, the box.
This one?
Oh, yeah. So, you know, what we did was ordinance, so start from the top, right? And I don't, I'm just talking through this because it's, it's important, and I'm trying to, I want to be flexible. But ordinance or amendment thereto is submitted to council. So, what, you know, the order of things was in April, you know, is when I brought the amendment to ordinance, gave the idea and the framework for what the issue was. And then ordinance voted to, you know, send it. And so, my understanding of the process was that it went, from April, it went to full city council. And then, full city council allowed or motion to, you know, allow the joint public hearing to happen, right? So, we just concluded, or we had that. So, council submits proposal to planning board for review, which that happened from full city council. Notice a public hearing is posted, published, and sent to the city council or committee appointed to hold hearing. So, that's where we have a little bit of the local practice of convening both boards together. And we did that in at least 14 days. Public hearing is held by planning board and city council or committee, maybe joint hearing, must be held within 65 days after the proposal submitted to the planning board. So, that's a, there's a document that Barbara sends out. I think it was released in May, and we held the public hearing within the 65 days. So, then, within 21 days of that public hearing, planning board report is received. This is where, this is where the question is. So, received or may vote after 21 days have elapsed. So, that presumes it goes to city council. And then, the city council must vote within 90 days after it holds the public hearing. So, that's the only caveat in the process, that it's a little bit unclear. And the big question for me is whether this group seeks to amend the language. You know, that's significant if the committee wants to send it to the full city council for that deliberation on the language, then that's the process that at least I was anticipating, but.
Well, maybe, maybe you can, because I know that Kot had sent an email. He was, there was a concern that this potential language would affect existing buildings, like the 25,000 square foot. So, I'm just wondering, is, would that cap, the 25,000 square foot cap, only apply to new building? And it would not apply to existing buildings in that zone?
Yeah, we had that, that was, you know, that was a very good question that got raised, and we created the language. So, there is a packet, as Counselor Zaret mentioned, that was in the council packet. It's in the council packet for tomorrow. That's the language that the planning board voted on with the report. And we did take several minutes to clarify that you could do retail and cultivation in an existing building. Or if you are building a new building, then you have to abide by, you know, these criteria. And that was the criteria that, you know, a new building must be less than 25,000 square feet. It has to be 75 feet from the road. Property has to be five acres. And there's one other thing, I don't have it on top of my head. But, so that was the language that the planning board kind of did feel satisfied with, at least sending to full city council for the, for their, for the public hearing.
Okay. And so, just for clarification's sake, if, oh, Tom, actually, go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
I just want to explore the possibilities here. So, if the idea is that, I mean, that this, because, yeah, so I see what Jeff is kind of saying, that the concern is that this is, well, it doesn't, well, it says hearing. So, the idea that if this is not a public hearing, then is it proper for us to be deliberating on this topic? And I don't know what the past practices, and I don't know how to interpret this, I'm not a lawyer. But just if we, if we, if that's, Jeff, if that's your concern, if you want us to act on that concern, then my understanding is that the only thing we could do is move it straight to a public hearing with no recommendation from this committee whatsoever. And in fact, without all three members of this committee having deliberated on that language in any way, which I'm fine with, but just so you know, I think that is going to make for an interesting public hearing.
Yeah, and I totally understand that part of it. I am just stuck on the, this step in the process. So, I'm very understanding that there's discussion to be had, and I appreciate that. I think that the important thing to, again, distinguish about this chart is it's not the statute. So, the statute, you know, is way worse than any zoning ordinance. But I did, I did consult with the city attorney, and I'm willing potentially to share the screen on his email in terms of, I asked a couple of questions about process. We've heard, I've gotten questions about the process in other respects, in terms of notification. So, I've been making sure that we've at least followed the minimum requirements, which we have.
I can't speak for my colleagues, but I would like to see that.
I will show that in a second. But I think what was important, and this is out of respect, is that the, in the statute, the planning board holds the authority to make the recommendation. Whereas, it requires the joint hearing if there's a committee of the, a subcommittee of the city council. I think the interesting point is that you are all city councilors who have the vote at the public hearing. So, I think my understanding of the process is that the planning board provides some of the language and their planning insight, and then it ultimately moves to full city council for larger debate. And you as the ordinance committee has that, has that, that's your voting opportunity on whatever was presented. So, if I could be given.
I just promoted you to co-host. So, I'll stop my share.
You know, I'm just, I apologize again. I, it's hard to maneuver. I'm only on a laptop. Almost there. Good. So, I don't know, you know, I asked, my question to our city attorney was to make sure that we followed the notification requirements, because that issue has come up. And then, this is also, you know, so this is also an excerpt, this is interpretation of the statute. So, again, it's not the actual statute, which I did pull up, but it's even worse. But, you know, we did submission of the proposed ordinance by one of the groups identified in the statute, which I believe that we followed that process. Within 14 days, city council refers to proposed ordinance to the planning board. Planning board and city council, either jointly or separately, hold a public hearing within 65 days of the proposed change to city council. So, this may be part of the crux of the awkwardness here, is that instead of ordinance or city council conducting a separate public hearing, it's been joint. That's how we've done these. And then, so then, here's the notice, which I'd like to skip for a moment, because I, probably another conversation. Number five is conduct separate or joint hearings according to open meeting laws. Planning board make recommendation on the proposed ordinance to city council, and then no vote may be taken until the planning board recommendation is submitted or 21 days. So, if the planning board, and this happens in towns or cities where there's no staff, like, or if I did nothing, planning board wrote nothing to city council, 21 days would go by, and city council could convene that public hearing. So, city council has to advertise a public hearing. Barbara does that. City council could convene a public hearing without any input from the planning board if 21 days have gone by. In this case, we met that, we, there's a report, which really tried to outline that there were a couple of remaining questions, that this was a long conversation, but it ultimately goes to city council. And then, the city council votes with two-thirds.
So, I guess, I guess my question is number five. Conduct separate or joint hearings, it doesn't say public hearings. I mean, did he?
I mean, a hearing, if you, it's, it's definitely, let me try to, hold on. Again, I'm sucking the Zoom world here.
That's fine. So. I mean, I might assume a public hearing, and that's fine.
Right, this is going to be even worse. But it's this, there's a lot here. And the statute is all one, basically, one giant sentence. But prior to the option, prior to the adoption of any zoning ordinance, so, this, actually, this one's for agricultural purposes. No vote to adopt any such proposed ordinance shall be taken until a report with recommendations by a planning board has been submitted to town meeting or city council, or 21 days have, 21 days after said hearing has elapsed without submission of such report after such notice, hearing, and report. Or after 21 days, a city council or town meeting may adopt, reject, or amend, amend and adopt. So, you, so the city council has the right to amend. And I think that's kind of where we're at, is just deciphering between whether the ordinance has an opportunity to amend it in between, or whether ordinance bring, you three bring your questions and concerns to the full city council. And then, you know, then you have a lot of leeway. If city council fails to vote to adopt any proposed ordinance within 90 days after the city council hearing, so that's the, that's the hearing that we, I think, my understanding is that we need to establish that hearing with city council to further the next section of the process. That's a quick read of that. And I know it's pretty convoluted.
Tom.
So, just one thing to clarify here. This committee, you know, because I just, you had earlier said something about that our opportunity to vote on this is when the public hearing is, happens. This committee and all other council committees do not vote to adopt any ordinance. We vote to make recommendations to the full council. So, we are strictly an advisory body. Something could fail here, three to zero, and then pass the full council. Like, we don't have the ability to kill anything, but we do have the ability to make recommendations. And so, I just think that that's a, that's a, maybe it is. I'm trying to not get my brain all wrapped up in all this stuff. But I feel like that is a relevant distinction when we talk about whether or not this is. Now, I think if you want to say, I mean, I can't speak for anyone else. If you want to say that you think that this conversation should be in the form of a public hearing, then I'm interested to go down that route. But I just do think it's important to say that per our city council rules and our charter, new measures including ordinances, in fact, ordinances specifically have to go to a committee and receive a report.
Where is that? I mean, I don't, I would like to see that. But I think that, I guess, if, Tom, and not to pick it apart a little bit, but if you, I think there's a difference between something you said and something that was said earlier. If you take the language that was voted by the planning board and want to make a recommendation to the full city council on that language, then I think that's fine. But what I heard was amending the language. And I think that that's where there's a difference. If, you know, that's my opinion, is that if you, you could vote, you could make recommendations to change, have the city council consider language changes. I think that's fine. I think that fits within an advisory role. I just want to be clear that I don't think the ordinance subcommittee here, without a hearing, has the right, has the authority to change the language. You could recommend council, like, consider, I hope I'm not laboring. I feel like I'm repeating myself. But there's a difference between changing the language and recommending language be changed by council.
Right, I think that's what we're talking about here. Owen.
I mean, I think this is really semantics. I mean, whether we call it an amendment or call it a recommendation, based on what the planning board gave us, it's, because as Counselor Peak pointed out, our decisions are non-binding, they're just, they're just a matter of their opinion.
Just be careful though, because I think Counselor Zaret, like, planning board gave a report to the full city council, not to the ordinance subcommittee, because it doesn't, the statute doesn't say the planning board shall give a report to anyone other than the full city council. So, I'm just trying to make sure we bridge this gap correctly.
No, and I think, and I think you're right, Jeff. I think you're right. And, but I also, I do believe that with, within, you know, our, within open meeting law, we have the ability to discuss what the planning board sent to us.
Yeah, yes.
As a committee.
Yeah.
And decide if there, if there are any amendments that we would want to recommend in addition.
Yeah.
There would be a separate, you know, obviously, we wouldn't amend the planning board's recommendation. We would come up with our own recommendation if we stop it, right? I think that's kind of what.
I think we're saying the same thing, as long as, I think, it's just, it's a fine point. It may be semantics, but it's a fine point that you'd be, as this subcommittee, you'd be formulating a recommendation that gets considered by full city council. As long as we're clear on that, that the full city council is going to have to hear a report from the ordinance subcommittee. They're going to read, and I can comment on some of the things that we discussed, the joint hearing. You're going to hear from abutters, you may hear from proponents, and the full city council is going to have to decipher and sift through all of that.
Yeah, and so, and this is actually an important conversation to have, just to make sure that we're doing everything in the correct way. So, I appreciate it. Owen.
So, Planner Bag, what is your interpretation then of how long we have to deliberate and make recommendations on the planning board recommendations? Is it 90 days or 21?
21. I think that, so, just with the statute, you know, the idea is that there are not unnecessary elongated gaps between point, like, the planning board recommendation, which they did on, all my dates are going to be all mixed up.
On the 18th, August 18th.
Thanks, August 18th. My goal was to meet the guidelines to furnish a report. So, I believe that the plan, the city council, I need to check whether the city council needs to can. I I need to check whether the city council needs to con convene or advertise a public hearing. I don't know. I and then. I need to check. One mechanism would be that this is how it works for the planning board for special permit application. So. Someone applies. The playing board has sixty-five days. They have to convene the first public hearing within sixty-five days. As soon as they do that, they've met the requirements and then they could continue it sort of as long as they need to. So if if city council needs to convene or start a public hearing. Then they have ninety days, so they could continue it for three months if they wanted to send it back to ordinance. Have have additional input. I think it's just it's it's mechanics of convening that first public hearing. Um, so I need to now I need to stop talking to Jeff.
Yeah, okay, Owen and then Tom.
I'm happy with uh what the planner just recommended that we set a public hearing and then given the fact that. I certainly still would like to examine some of this language that. We can um continue the public hearing for X amount of time while we review the the language. Just that way, we're we're compliant with the the state regulations.
Tom. And then Jeff.
I just out of curiosity, um, I'm trying, I'm looking back at my calendar. Was that? Two weeks ago that we had the initial. Um, where we had that where that public like, when did that clock start ticking for twenty-one days? How many days are we actually talking about? That we still have till then? Was that last week or two weeks ago that we?
It was the eighteenth. Two weeks ago.
Okay, so we're already fourteen days in.
Right.
We need to, so it is as long as it's scheduled with it.
As long as it's scheduled, I I believe that we're good.
Okay, so we just need to schedule it tomorrow.
Right, that was the that was the way that I had run at least timeline wise. Was that the expectation was that I the report was furnished. Um, and then it was received within twenty-one days. City council can then set a hearing. And that's that's the mechanism that we have to achieve. And then, so I I have the statute. If you if you don't mind, I'm gonna, it's important. I'm sorry, it's totally. This is, you know, in-depth kind of conversation, but um. Am I screen sharing right now?
Not yet.
Okay. So. This sets up that no vote, right? So there's, you know, none of these words are capitalized, but these are the key words. So no vote. To adopt any such ordinance shall be taken until a report with recommendation by playing were submitted to to city council. Or twenty-one days after the said hearing has elapsed without submission. So even if we even if we were not in this conversation and nothing had happened. Twenty-one days have to go by with nothing, then you then you have to set a public hearing. And so what Barbara's. Told me is that she has a she, I think it's in the charter, that she she publishes a public hearing for city council. And it has to be published ten days prior. So as long as that, you know, is in motion within the twenty-one days. Um, it can be twenty-one days or after. So. Um, I think that I'm I'm sorry if I'm losing my train of thought. I think the key action is stop this screenshot. And although I I know there's other questions and comments behind, I think the key action is that we provided the report within twenty-one days. Um, city council now can, like, in order to vote, they have to set a public hearing.
Right.
And then and then there's ninety days. So that's the important part, I think, for this for this ladder, like the extra discussion that you might want to have.
Right, okay, Owen.
So are you saying that we could, we just have to vote a public hearing and that could be theoretically like two months from now?
Has to be ninety days, right? Has to be.
Right, so that so sixty days.
Yeah.
Just, yes, I but one thing you might want to consider is do you want to get public input? And have that public input at all so that you can inform your discussion.
So like, so hold the public hearing and continue it.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, because otherwise you're gonna work on it, work on it for two months, and then you're gonna hold a public hearing and you might. You know, not everyone's gonna show up to every ordinance subcommittee, i- if it's not a public hearing. I mean, public hearings are the important part. It's like the legal process. It's the legal time for people to to chime in and have it, you know, be affect affect the public record in the decision.
Okay. Good, alright, um, so I I think that's so as far as process wise, I'll tomorrow night I'll set the public hearing. Um, Barbara gave me a date for it. I think that was appropriate and then. Um, we'll keep it in committee so we can still deliberate. Um, because, I mean, that that part to me is super important. Be I I would be so, I would be so bummed if we weren't able to deliberate and talk about. You know, what our potential, you know, take on it is, you know, if we could only do that at the public hearing, that'd be pretty sad, but um. Yeah, so we could deliberate, we could have a public hearing, invite people in, see what they and then continue it to and to further refine. What our amendments or what changes we might potentially make or or not, you know. Um, so any any other thoughts, Owen or Tom? And and then I know that we have people here that I'm sure would like to make a comment. I'm happy to entertain that. Yeah, Owen.
No, I appreciate the planner uh educating us on the process, and I think it sounds like we could still accomplish what we're. Discussing here, then have input from this committee as long as we set a public here and get some input and then kind of create some space where we can. We can continue to have a discussion so we can provide some sort of report to the full council. Or recommendation.
So and if anybody um would like to to speak to this, uh, you know, you can. I believe you can unmute yourself, just identify yourself, your name and your address for the record. Um, and I'm happy to, or the committee is happy to entertain any comments. Cut.
Hi, Fox on one seventy Palmory Meadow Road, Southampton, Mass. Uh, thank you councillor Derby for um basing my concern from the email. Um, I'm listening and I'm understanding. So I I do think it's a great idea to obviously. Look at it from an ordinance view first. As it's the hearing is set, so that way it's possibly possibly easier to navigate through once you get to the hearing. So that way there's there's less issues once you're already there. I I mean, I completely agree with that. And um. Now with this here. Is is the is the recommendations gonna be based on? Um setbacks or stuff like that? Are you gonna look at setbacks, heights of the building? Um, and timelines of uh when this would reach the public hearing?
So so on- once we set the public hearing tomorrow. Um, we'll 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 set another committee meeting where we're gonna take a look, dig in deep to the planning board's recommendation. See if there's anything we want to add, anything that we want to subtract as a recommendation to the council in addition to what the planning board has sent. Um, but I think what Jeff said makes a lot of sense is to have a public hearing. Um, and and get input from the public and then continue that. And so we would then continue our deliberation. And now our deliberation. Um, the the only limits to that deliberation are that it's germane to what the topic is, you know, so. Since we're looking at hot, you know, cultivation and highway business, we, you know, setbacks are in in play, heights of the buildings are in play. Square footage is in play. All that stuff is in play. Um, I don't know if that answers your question.
Uh, yes, that's it. That does. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, anybody else? Jeff.
Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, I could, I get a copy, Jeff Bag of of what the. The town attorney sent to you. I I I saw it on the screen, but I didn't get a chance to really digest it. And uh, I saw something in there about notifying a butters.
Yeah, I'm happy to forward the email and I guess if if that, we should probably talk about that. I'm. Come up um as a question of the process. So I don't know, um. Um, councillor Derby, if you want to, I'll put that back up on the screen. I mean, I I've got a lot of questions. I I've seen. I've seen a lot of questions about notification. And um, you know, we we believe that we follow the requirements as outlined. And so just a quick summary of that. Is that uh we have to notify um DHCD, which is the Department of Housing and Community Development and surrounding towns. And then there's there's a provision that says that for non-residential property owners that have submitted documentation to the city clerk. That they want to be notified. Um, and and without that, without a filing of that document, I mean, it's weird. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pretend that it's clear. But we we found no documentation of any property owner submitting a request to the city clerk for notification of zoning amendment. So. Um, I think it's easy to, I think it's easy to say that the process is. Like, I what I'm hearing is people saying the process is flawed, but technically we follow the process, which is that. Property owners within a district do not need to be notified, um, nor do a budding property owners. You know, I I can kind of see in hindsight how it would have been. By I me, I guess, falls on me to make some kind of arbitrary decision to notify everybody. And I'm not authorized to do that, nor do I have any directions or guidance. So short of that. Um, the only other thing I could have done, I suppose, is push some stuff out on Facebook. And I I do that periodically. So to some extent, I can be, you know, a target for saying I didn't do a Facebook post, but other than that, I. I think that the I've heard, you know, conversations about changing the process or increasing notification requirements. And this is not the only project we have. You know, this is a zoning amendment, so it's kind of. Um, it's chapter forty-eight, section five. And then for the special permits for like another example is section, um, maybe it's section eleven. For notices for special permits. And so, you know, I I am one person who who does this that. Um, without direction, um, you know, I don't, I don't use my own discretion to to broaden notices. When I feel like we met the requirement, but I know it, I know that that falls, I know that kind of falls on deaf ears and I I can appreciate that, but. Um, so I'm gonna, if I can, um, I'll share the screen.
Well, Jeff, real quick, let me just back you up here because, you know, this is, this is, this is a crux and and it is, it is a. You know, I was just in public safety and we were looking at the the propane storage and, you know, that's the butters uh for propane storage, which is. Kind of a big deal, you know, I mean, that blows up, that's not good, you know, but it's you you have to notify people that are within three hundred feet. And what we're talking about here is a zoning amendment that's for an entire zone, the highway business zone, which spans the entire city from coast to coast. So the the, you know, and of alerting every butter would be a mass mailing. It would be a huge time commitment. It'd be a huge cost. You know, beyond, um, because there are some, there are thousands of butters, you know. Um, so I I just want to put that out there.
I mean, I'm sensitive to it. I I I've heard some of the the comments and arguments as to why people feel like they should have been notified, and I don't disagree, but. I don't um have the authority to make make my own decisions and, you know, I I recognize some names on the call. And so if if it. If it's one property adjacent, you know, why not two properties adjacent? And then why not the whole street? Because there could be some proceeding. And so the. I'm not trying to push back on that, except that I I just want to be clear that I follow the process that we have laid out. And so if I if I may, I mean, it's important. Um, because this is the email that I'll share out for the request of Mr. Shonak. So, you know, it's uh item C here. So Department of is, you know, community, um, DHCD, regional planning agency, planning board in each of buddy towns. And this is obviously the language that I asked about, which is why it's highlighted. Um, non-resident property owners whose property lies within the district. Where a boundary density or use changes, uh, where such owner has filed a request to city or town clerk. Um, and then the the item V is if it, if it must be given to the farm, farmland advisory board. Um, and then, you know, any um party entitled to notice above can waive it. So, you know, I'm really sensitive. To people who have kind of called out the process and and it's not me, it's not like I I just wish it wasn't a personal attack. You know, because I did what I statue says. So the rest of it is merit for the public hearing. And and the pros and cons or the issues with the questions that have been raised, I think, you know. I think need to be brought to city council and that's that that's the final stop here for the full deliberation. So. Um, I I don't know if I'm helping or not, but I'm just trying to explain kind of a little bit of what my responsibility was.
Councillor Peak.
I'll just say, like, in addition to this, that like. This. As as someone who's who's been uh on the count, this is now my second term on the council. Like, one thing that I have said before and I'll continue to say is that the city. Needs to kind of in general find like ways to be better at pushing out information. That's not a criticism of Jeff. That's a criticism of like this entire system. Um, and it's like. It it's a really frequent problem that we have where there's a a topic that, you know, uh, is of a re- of a real interest. To specific people. Um, and we don't manage to get that information into the right hands. And in almost in every case that I can think of, we didn't actually have a legal responsibility to get that information out. Per mass general law. And I don't think we had any legal responsibility here, but I also at the same time think it's worth pointing out. That like, we would have been doing our jobs better if we'd found a way to do it, like the just in general, like. If there's people who would have an interest in this, then if we had figured out some way to do that, then that would have been a better and not a worse thing. Um, but that is a a question that I think. Um, like, I mean, I know there's a working group right now talking about stuff with the website. And if there's ways we can make that more accessible and whether there's email blasts we should be sending out or whether we should be. Doing something different on social media or whatever. And I know this is like an ongoing conversation. I don't want to just ramble for too long, but I just want to say that like. This isn't an aberration. It's unfortunately kind of the status quo is that we just, we don't really have. First of all, the the state doesn't make us do uh be really, really good at pushing out information. And it beyond that, we just don't have the systems right now developed where we are very good at it. So.
It's not, it's not.
But sorry, what was that?
Uh, I was saying it's also not prescribed in the charter, which is under review right now too. So. You know, if if it was prescribed, that would change, that would probably force some change, but. Um, but I agree a hundred percent, Tom. Good point. Owen.
Yeah, I agree too. I mean, it's it's really our job as elected officials to make sure we're doing everything we can to disseminate information. I and I agree. I sympathize with the planner that there's, you know, you do also have to work within the confines of uh the regulations and. Ordinances that are presented to you, and I'm not faulting you at all. I think that. You know, moments like this are are learning opportunities for how we could do better and I agree with what councillor Peak is saying that. And this is just part of a larger conversation, so I won't belabor it. But, you know, anything we could do to create better ways of disseminating information to the public. Whether required or not is really part of, should be part of our mission.
Yep. Tom.
But just to sort of echo something that you already said, councillor Derby. You know, when we're talking about this, I think a lot of the folks who have, who I've spoken to, have heard from, who feel like at like notice wasn't. Properly given, like, part of that was that they live near a property that would be affected. By like, the where there's a person who wants to to make a. Um, make a change, but just to sort of reiterate. You know, like, i- if if we were to say that, um, like, some something totally, I'll I'll come up with something silly, like. That everyone should be able to put a fifty-foot watchtower in their backyards, right, to zoning. I might personally want to do that. But you don't, like, that doesn't mean the, like, that's a whole, that's a whole citywide conversation. It's not about. Um, like, 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 if this happens, and I think this is a quite a thing that so- some of the people who have been skeptical of this have brought up. And I think there's a good point to it, that, you know, it's easy to narrow our scope and look at one property that's expressed interest in developing, but won't. Unless we make this amendment. It's also worth noting, though, that there are a number of other properties in the highway business district throughout the city. That could potentially be used to say nothing of all the properties that are currently occupied by something else. But they could just as easily be bulldozed to build a new building under this. So. So to provide adequate notice wouldn't be to provide notice of the butters of the tasty top property. It would be to provide a notice to every single business and resident living in the highway business district. That's what it would actually look like, because it could be that the the whole tasty top thing falls through, but that there's another property somewhere else in the highway business district. Because it could be that the, the whole Tasty Top thing falls through, but that there's another property somewhere else in the Highway Business District that goes and develops and someone says, well, why wasn't I notified? So, yeah, we should be doing more information to push things out. But just to be clear, like, this isn't really a site, I mean, it is and it isn't unfortunately. Because, like, I mean, I, I don't think anyone's arguing this wasn't, like, prompted by a particular person's particular interest. But like, at the same time, this is a district-wide change, not a change for one site.
Good, good point.
I'll defer to Mr. Sernak. I have something just, I guess.
Okay, uh, Jeff Sernak and, and then City Planner.
Yes, I, I, I understand it's, it can be difficult to get information out to everyone. But is, what, what I read on the screen, and maybe it wasn't up there long enough, sounds like there is an obligation to get a mailing out to a butters to let them know. And how many properties are there in within Highway Business? Fifty?
Uh, I'd say there's probably more than fifty.
Yeah, and I think, I don't think it was up long enough because the, the only obligation is if someone who owns property in the district has filed with the clerk to be notified. And I, I'm not pretending to say that that's not convoluted, but that, I mean, when, with my experience, it was that the, for, for zoning amendment, it's not required to notify properties within the district. And, and that explains why is unless there's a filing in existence with the clerk.
It does have some impact on all the properties around it because there is that two-hundred-foot buffer. And if, you know, if that didn't exist, it probably wouldn't be such a big issue.
Right, and I think, you know, I think though, you know, I think Counselor Peak kind of said something about the impacts. And, and one thing, I just, my follow-up was that Tom, Mr. Counselor Peak said, you know, that it's, it could affect property owners within the district. But I know, you know, we have someone on the call who is immediately adjacent. So whatever future discussions happen, you know, where there's some, some bigger conversations about what is the notice requirement going to be to, to give everyone adequate notice. Because notifying property owners within the district is not going to cover the property who's outside the district adjacent. So, um, you know, I know, I, I'm, I'm aware and I'm sensitive to the fact that that doesn't solve anything. The only other thing I want to mention is with zoning amendments, we, we just want to, as, as this discussion continues, we do want to be at least mindful that there's two discussions happening, which is the overarching zoning, which does talk about uses and could allow certain things. And, and you can deal with some of the potential impacts through the zoning amendment. But there is a next phase, which, and some of the things I've heard really lean towards the next phase, which is very specific measures for a specific project that would, you know, be important. So, so I think, you know, exact questions about what, what things will look like and where they'll be and how, you know, like odor mitigation will happen, you know, will really happen at the special permit level. Because with all due respect to people on here, I mean, there was discussion about a seventy-five-foot setback from residential properties and it was dismissed. And it's not to say that it can't come back up at city council, but the question about odor in particular was determined to be nebulous. And seventy-five feet, fifty feet, a hundred and fifty feet, you know, that distance wasn't going to mitigate odor. What would mitigate odor is like a very specific measure proposed by an actual project. And so it's just going to be, uh, I think, uh, an effort that we're all going to kind of embark on as we go to decipher between questions that are zoning district and then questions that are going to be kind of more site-specific or, or application-specific. And then I know it's not easy and I'm not pretending that it's, I, I, I'm not trying to be, um, you know, dismissing, dismissive of people's concerns that I've, I've been aware of.
Uh, Danielle.
Um, so I completely understand.
Just one second, real quick, can you just say your name and your address for the record?
Danielle Martino, eighty-nine North Hampton Street, East Hampton. Um, so I completely understand not notifying the butters. When you look at the law, that's what it says. My frustration with this was that this, these meetings occurred during quarantine, um, where the public wasn't notified, um, through the normal protocols. And I'm a little bit confused about this, but it's my understanding that you need to have a public notice within fourteen days of the public hearing. And, I mean, I know that you, Jeff, you've mentioned that that was, I guess, online, but like, we didn't know that.
No, I mean, I'm sensitive to that. I mean, I do, I do need to say that we follow the protocol, which, and, and I've heard kind of the people like basically saying, why publish something in the Gazette, like, who reads that? And that's totally understandable, but that was the requirement. And then what, what has shifted, and it's been shifted for quite some time, is that instead of outside on the, on the side of Fifty Basin, it's, it's been, the clerk determined that posting it online is publicly available. And so.
My question is, was it fourteen days before the public hearing?
Yeah, you've been asking good questions and you're definitely, I mean, I'm definitely like trying to make sure that people.
It's like two, three days before the meetings, which, you know, I'm going, I'm gonna give you the benefit of the doubt because I have no idea. There's no way of proving that. But it's, it just doesn't feel good as an East Hampton resident for this to happen in this way. And I'm not holding anyone accountable for that because I don't think it's just one person, but it's still frustrating.
Yeah. Well, I would say, I mean, just from, uh, as far as meeting processes. So ordinance has had, um, you know, I'd, I'd say maybe three to five meetings on this topic. And all of our meetings are advertised just the same way that they've always been. Um, now, now committee meetings don't need to be fourteen-day notice. That's public hearing is fourteen-day notice. Um, committee meetings generally are forty-eight-hour notice, but we always give at least a week notice for our meetings. Um, just as best practice. Um, it's generally, it's generally more than a week that we have, uh, for our meetings.
But even the public hearing notices aren't fourteen days.
I did, I did, I thought, I thought, I, I'm certain I wrote to you and I double-checked that we had published some, I, the, we were running two, two amendments at the same time, so, and they're overlapping. But one, I think it was June twenty-third, the agenda, the, the public hearing notice for the joint hearing was published. And then it started on July eleventh, I think, if the numbers add up. I, I, I just worry I sent that over based on some of your questions. So it doesn't answer the, the bigger question, but it shows that we met the fourteen-day notice requirement, but.
Sorry, but I just want to get some clarification about that. So, yes, when, when the date says received on the notice, it is fourteen days. You are correct. But posting it is something else. Posting it so the public can see when these meetings occur should be fourteen days, not, not fourteen days received by the city clerk.
Wow.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, and I'm sorry.
And, and I'm just gonna jump here as the, I'm just gonna jump in here as the chair. This is really not super germane to the topic that's on our agenda. Um, I mean, I understand why it's important, uh, and, and why you're asking these questions. But, you know, I, I just kind of want to keep it on track because I, I can see the other people.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that when the clerk's notice, like, publishes the date stamp is when it goes online. I'm just trying to clarify that.
Okay. Um, Owen, I saw that you had your hand up real quick and then I want to get Rick because he's had his hand up for a while.
Yeah, actually, I would defer to, uh, Mr. Sernak first.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And I wanted to thank Owen for, uh, uh, answering our, our calls, um, and our, our emails about, without Owen, I wouldn't have known about tonight's meeting. And thank you. Um, yeah, just an observation, I was looking at the proposed amendments on the website and it's blank. It just says proposed amendments and there's nothing about this on the East, City of East Hampton website. Um, just wondering why? Anybody could answer that?
Um, I had made a request that Barbara publish that information, but there's two places you can find zoning amendments. So here we go, like, it's pretty easy to call out how the system is, uh, could be better. The planning board page has also a zoning amendment tab, which is where my responsibility lies to publish that on the planning board page. So with some apology, it, it is posted there along with all the other stuff that is zoning amendment. Um, I did make a request for Barbara to post the, the language in the packet. So there is a chance, um, you know, my, my deadline, um, to make sure that I was working forward was, um, last Thursday, the twenty-seventh, at noon is the deadline to submit items to council. So, you know, that was my concerted effort and I made the request to Barbara to publish that packet um, under the city council's zoning amendment section and apparently it's not there. But, um, it should be as soon as the planning, I mean, as soon as this committee, as soon as the city council publishes their date for a public hearing, it should go up there. But I appreciate that. That's, that's information that, without knowing that, we don't know.
And I would also, I would also just add to that, that Barbara, in addition to being the clerk to the city council and the city clerk, is responsible for all the elections. Um, and so with the number of mail-in ballots and running the election that was today, she has been really under the gun. So that might have been, now, Jeff, would you be, if someone emailed you or called you and asked for, and, you know, for you to email them that amendment, you, would you be, is that something you're willing to do? Or emailing them a link to the, where it is on your page?
Yeah, the hard part, I just, and I know that you want to move on. I mean, the hard part is someone emailing me with a standing request to be updated on every, you know, everything that happens in the future. Like, I, I can't, I never commit to that. I, I, it's hard. And I know that that has been, I know that, that something has come up. But, yes, I'll email, um, Mr. Jeff Sernak the, the email that was discussed. And I can email whoever, I can email Rick or Jeff both the packet. I mean, the packet is now publicly available. It should, it should be up there, Rick. I really appreciate that. It should be up there. It's on the planning board page, um, because I personally put it there.
And Rick, did you have anything you wanted to add? I'd like to go back to, I'd like to go back to Danielle because I cut her off a little bit. Okay. Danielle, did you have anything you wanted to add on this particular amendment?
Um, no, I mean, I guess I just really want to make sure that the public knows about these meetings. I just think they're really, really important meetings, um, and that the public needs to, to have their input, whatever that input is. Um, it, it, this doesn't just impact highway business. Um, the way that East Hampton is set up, it's not, it's not set up that way. Um, so I just hope that it's, these notices are, you know, some way you guys figure it out where you can notify the community during, uh, you know, um, quarantine in the best way possible. Um, so.
And, and so, uh, tomorrow night at the full city council meeting, I'm going to be making a, uh, a motion to set a public hearing for this topic. I don't have, I apologize that I don't have the date in front of me because our clerk had sent me the date and I just haven't been able to find that email yet, but tomorrow night I will, um, set it. And so that will be an opportunity, um, to, to be able to speak to the full council on this topic as well. Um, and then what we've discussed, uh, tonight is that we're going to continue that public hearing. So there'll be actually even more time for input. So, you know, our goal is definitely not to limit input, it's to get as much as we can and to try to, you know, make as an informed and responsible decision as we possibly can for the entire city, for the entire zone. You know, that's, that's what we're here for, so, um, and Owen, I saw that you had something. Do you want to?
I do, but I, I want to defer to the public first, before, you know, make some defer from them before I, yeah.
Rick, did you want to?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I, if I understand you correctly, and I want to make sure everybody else does too, that tomorrow night, you have a city council meeting and will this be a subject, a topic of discussion tomorrow night or not at all?
Not at all. Uh, the only, the only thing that we're going to discuss tomorrow night is, uh, me setting, making a motion for a public hearing at a later date.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Counselor's there?
I, I made a mistake. I see, and I made a mistake. The amendment is on the planning department page. So I had said planning board and then I just double-checked that it's actually on the planning department page. So there is a difference and I apologize. The amendment as the, the packet that was sent out is in two places, planning department page under zoning amendments, and then the way you find city council information is through agendas and minutes. And so there's a packet for city council for their meeting tomorrow and the, the same packets in there.
Um, Counselor's there, did you have something you want to say? Danielle has her hand up as well.
Uh, I just want to ask for process and then again, uh, just so, if, if we're going to set a public hearing, will we take a vote today at least for, to recommend or not recommend to, to report out to the council?
I don't, I don't, we, we're not, we're not compelled to. And, and I feel like I would like to have a little bit more time to sit with the, the planning board's recommendation and to discuss with the committee before we make our recommendation, if that sounds reasonable. Counselor Peak.
Yeah, I mean, we've sometimes set public hearings like a, like, right after introducing a measure where we haven't even met on it yet. So there's certainly no pressure on us right now to have a fully formed opinion before we set a public hearing. I would say that given the level of public interest in this and given that there's some ways in which this is a fairly complicated issue, um, it might be a good idea for this committee to settle on a report, even if we don't all agree, just to have some really clearly formed opinions on this prior to the council public hearing. Because I expect that our colleagues will want our opinions, um, and will want to hear what we've taken away from this process. Because this isn't really necessarily the most cut and dry thing we've ever discussed.
No, I, I think that, that is, um, that was my intention at least for us to set the, because the dates that Barbara gave me were at least a couple of weeks out. So we would definitely have a chance to meet again and, and discuss it and even, and take a vote. And then I, I, Danielle, did I, I think I might have skipped over you and then I'll go to Cot.
Um, I was just, uh, commenting on, um, when I go to the planning board website for the amendments, for some reason, nothing shows up. I'm not sure if I'm on the, the correct website. Um, but I, Jeff, I don't know if that's something that you're aware of. I don't know if it's, if it's different for like different browsers. But when I go on the planning board's website and click on the proposed, I think it's like proposed amendments, nothing shows up. So I, so I just, um, I don't know what's going on there, but.
Is it on the planning department one? Is that why?
It must be, yeah. I don't know, it's wherever the proposed amendments are. And it's, you sent me a link to, to that particular, um, website and nothing shows up. So I don't know if, what's going on. Um, but that would be like, that type of information would be really good for me to have. And I just, it, it took me forever to get it. Um, I think I had to get it through you guys. So, um, or through, I think it was, uh, Rick, so.
Yeah, uh, uh, and the planning department, yeah, it's important to distinguish between the planning department and planning board. So I did fish around the planning department and, uh, it's, you know, I, I want to double-check everything because we're talking about it, um, very intensely here. I see the packet from, it's dated August seventeenth and I just, I'm gonna open it. I just want to make sure, um, because I want you guys to, um, I, I want to reload, um, I'm going to reload the packet from city council. This is not there, so I misspoke. I can do it.
So I'm just, point of order for one second.
Go ahead, Tom. Go ahead, Tom.
Um, you know, I, I, I think that this is a really interesting conversation from the point of view of that we need to get a lot better at pushing out information and this is instructive of that. But just for what it's worth, this is a, of the city council. The city has, just like the federal government, like different branches of government. This planning department is within the executive.
Executive.
Branch, and Jeff, well, his opinion is extremely valued and important here, is not a member of this committee. So while I think this is all a really, really important thing, I questioning whether or not this is the exact appropriate time and place to be having these conversations um, when it comes to this. And I, and I say that with the acknowledgement that I'm willing to budge a little bit on that because I think it's important that we do discuss how the relevant parties get the right information. But like, you know, whatever problems there are with where information is posted and what information has been posted is an executive branch issue.
Good point. Good point.
I don't need to sound like a jerk with that. I'm just, from, from a point of just process, I think it's important and I just reiterate that.
Right. Uh, Cot, did you want to add something?
All right, thank you. I, I had to unmute myself for a second there. Now, since, uh, Counselor Peak is talking about process, so I'm going to, um, speak a little bit about process because we all understand and I respect that this amendment is across the board for the Highway Business District. But we don't have to go around that it is actually triggered by the Tasty Top site. And because there are butters there that it could be possibly affected by this, and maybe that's why they're basing their concerns um, in regards to. And maybe that's why they're basing their concerns in regards to these changes. Because these are neighbors of the community who care about what is going on in their community. So if if it's triggered by this site, maybe something to look into that the city could possibly do is possibly. Send out notices to these butters if it's triggered because of a specific site, I should say, right? And that would probably avoid issues later on or concerns. And that way they can come on and address any concerns or issues that they might have or suggestions they might have. And it'll probably help this entire process move a little bit smoother.
Thanks, Owen.
Yeah, I mean, without belaboring this, I I agree. I think unfortunately, the way that we had to discuss this amendment is obviously as it applies to the entire Highway Business District. And 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 I agree that there might be an appearance of this. The 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 reason for this amendment specifically to be geared towards possible businesses on the Tasty Top parcel. And I won't confirm or deny that. I'm just talking my own opinion. I think as the planner has said, what the way that you would ultimately be notified about. A project specifically that parcel would be if there was a special permit process. And I'll, I agree with what you're saying. I mean, I'll just really quickly say for the record, because this meeting's running a little longer than I expected. But for whatever reason, and this is just my opinion, I'm not, I'm not criticizing anyone here. The 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 whole entirety of the process of the specific amendment has left me feeling very uneasy. The initial language that we discussed is much different than the end product. And I understand that happens sometimes, but I guess I wish I understood or was able to have a more robust discussion. The ordinance committee before we sent this to the planning. And I think there's kind of this, for me, there's this ongoing kind of cloud hanging over this. That this is kind of favoring one real specific business, even if that's not intended. So I I don't, I'm having a hard time with this and I think that could affect ultimately how I may vote on this. But it, I just wanted to say that for the record.
Fair enough, and and why don't we, let's just get some final, final comments here. And because I think that we've kind of run to the end of where this discussion is going to go tonight. And just be aware that we are going to discuss this again in committee. And this is going to be a public hearing that is most likely going to get continued. So Rick, did you want to say something and then Danielle?
Yes, thank you very much. Yeah, I, the question arises, I I agree with what Owen just said. I mean, this does, it's kind of funky and it is, it is uncomfortable, I'm sure, for everybody here and and other people too who aren't here. And if it's, it it's kind of, kind of strikes me funny that if it's not about the Tasty Top parcel specifically. Then what's the hurry? Why can't you table, I, you know, if you vote it down, wait two more years, bring it back up then. If it's not about Tasty Top, it's not about Tasty Top. If it is about Tasty Top, then we got a bigger problem and I just want to say, I hope we don't go there. That's all. That's, thank you very much.
Danielle.
So I guess I just would like some clarification about what the what the next process is. And like how, as in a butter and somebody that will be very much affected by these decisions. Whether it's property next to me or property next to that property. What can I do to get my voice heard? Because I have a lot of concerns, a lot of grave concerns about allowing a 25,000-square-foot cultivation in manufacturing center in the highway business.
So I would say, you know, continue to come to these meetings and come to the city council meeting, the the public hearing that we're going to set. And you will absolutely, I mean, as you can tell, I'm not trying to keep anybody's voice from being heard in in this forum. So and and we're not going to do that at the council level either. So, you know, as you're, we are welcome to have your your voice heard and we will hear you. So. Anybody else? Final, final thoughts? Okay, so, you know, if you guys are interested tomorrow night, you can just check in on the meeting to see when we set the public hearing for. And we will be having another ordinance subcommittee meeting before our committee meeting before the public hearing for sure. Where we will discuss this, so, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, do you, for the sake also of the public gathered here, do you anticipate maybe a date that we could give them now? For both when you would like to set the public hearing as well as maybe when we meet next, just?
Well, like I said, I I can't give you the public hearing one because Barbara sent me the dates that she felt were the most appropriate for that. And I just don't have that email at my fingertips. So I guess there's a little anticipation for tomorrow. But as far as us meeting. I I think that I have no problem setting our next meeting, if you guys have your calendars. Jeff?
Yeah, and I I'm sensitive to the fact that we, people on the call need to know that this is not a definitive. But Counselor Derby, if you don't mind, I mean, I did have, so, you know, I I'm a process guy, I chart out dates. That's what I do, like to make sure that kind of stuff works. My general, this is just for awareness, so my general understanding is that city council has a full docket on September 16th. You know, Counselor Conniff, you know, I I'm moving a lot of stuff, I'm doing a lot for the whole city, like a wide range of things. I was told nothing's happening on the 16th. So the date that I was told to look at was October 7th. So whether or not that's the ultimate date that gets chosen tomorrow, I just want to give people on the call like a sense of what was discussed was like. Yeah, it's not gonna happen tomorrow. And my understanding was 16th was, so those are normal meetings of the city council would be tomorrow. This is the second, the 16th, which I was told they're not, we're not adding anything to the agenda. And then the next meeting that would be available would be the 7th. And so that was what I thought like might be viable.
Yeah, and that's probably, that's probably what was in the email. I just didn't, I didn't want to say it because I wasn't sure. But so, yeah.
Soonest we could possibly do it.
Yeah, and, yeah, and and I have no problem with that. And so that means that we would probably our next. It looks to me probably like the September 22nd would be the best. That's a Tuesday. I don't know how that works with the other counselors. Let me look. Counselors there?
I'm I'm open all day, Mr. Chairman.
Well, we won't do it early in the day. It'll be probably seven o'clock or.
Could you say the day one more time?
September 22nd.
22nd? Yeah, that should be fine.
7:00 PM? Does that work with you guys?
Yes, sir.
Okay, wonderful. All right, so everybody on the call. Or the next time that we're going to meet is the the 22nd at 7:00 PM. Then just be aware that that's, this is probably not the only thing we're going to be discussing. So you might learn some things about some other stuff we have on our agenda. Good, all right, beautiful. I I would, unless anybody has anything else they'd like to add, I'm happy to have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, Counselors Eric?
Aye.
Counselor Peak?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thanks for coming, everybody. I'm glad you found us. And, you know, we will do our best to make sure that everybody's voices are heard as we go through this process. All right, take care, everybody.